Okay, it's seven, I think we can get started.
All right, we're just gonna start then. Okay, all right, welcome everybody to the October 4th Planning Commission meeting. We don't have to read all of the stuff we used to, right? We just move right on to roll call.
Oh, great. Did you want to officially call the meeting to order, Vice Chair?
I said, welcome.
Okay, great.
And officially ordered.
Thank you.
That's okay.
All right, Commissioner Del Negro?
Not yet.
Any attendees? Let me bring him in, he's just trying to be in in one second. Commissioner Quake?
Present.
Commissioner Wong?
I am present.
Thank you, Commissioner Del Negro. Commissioner Wong?
Present.
Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
Thank you, and Chair Joe has an excused absence tonight.
So, thank you. Yeah, I haven't run one of these in two plus years, so if I'm rusty, do forgive me. With that said, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge
allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation
under God
indivisible liberty liberty and justice
Thank you. All right. Anything, any changes? No? Okay, then the agenda is just fine. We have one set of minutes to approve from September 20th this year. Comments, motions, Kathy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have one quick comment on the minutes, and it's just a little typey, typo. It's under announcements, number seven. October 15th, 2021, man, woman, student of the year. One, one will be distributed to each commission. Can you please insert one invitation?
Of course.
And then to share with its, share with all members. Oh, that's okay, I was thinking it's members, but all members, it's good. That's it, if there's no other questions, I move that we approve the minutes.
Just one other clarification.
Yes.
On page two, near the upper middle, it says Commissioner comments include table of contents listed figures to make ATP easier to read. This has full list of planning commissioner comments is due from consultant 10-621. Are we planning commissioners to provide comments to the consultant? Or is that just the consultant compiles the comments from the previous presentation?
As I read it, it's from, so it, they're just the notes that they took at the meeting, correct? Yeah, Darcy's shaking her head. So, yes. Okay, so Kathy made a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, and then can we have the votes, please?
Commissioner Del Negro?
Who?
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quake?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Approved with the correction on the second page. Thank you.
Right. Next up is Public Communications. This is time set aside for members of the public to make a statement to the Planning Commission that something in our purview, but not on tonight's agenda. Chrissy, is anybody raising their hand? Any attendees?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Then we'll close that part of Public Communications. Next up is the public hearing. It is the Millbury Station area specific plan amendments. In its consideration of a resolution recommending that Millbury City Council approve an amendment and the accompanying text and images to the Millbury Station area specific plan. The amendment consists of number one, replacement of 16 images with new updated images. And two, an amendment to modify policy P-I-M-P-12 of the specific plan to allow a community benefits agreement as an option for the developer and the city under the Community Benefits Program. And number three, an amendment to page 182 in chapter 10 to allow the acceptance of affordable housing funds as a community benefit. Do we have a staff report? There it is.
I just want to make sure that you guys are seeing the full screen of it and not the cut down version that I'm seeing. Right, thank you. So, good evening, planning commissioners. The presentation tonight is regarding the Millbury Station area specific plan amendments. I'm Nestor Guevara, Associate Planner here at the City of Millbury. I'm joined by Bruce Brubaker and Pranjali Deokol from Placeworks. Agenda for tonight. So, the item for tonight is consideration of a resolution recommending that the Millbury City Council approve an amendment and the accompanying text and images to the Millbury Station area specific plan. The amendment consists of the following three. One, replacement of 16 images with new updated images. Two, modification of policy P-I-M-P-12 to allow Community Benefits Agreement as an option for the developer and the city under the Community Benefits Program. And three, modification of text on page 182 in chapter 10 to allow the acceptance of affordable housing funds as a community benefit. The amendments are city initiated as a result of City Council direction, direction to staff as part of the annual work plan. A little bit of background information on the MSASP. The update was adopted by the City Council back in February of 2016. The plan guides future development in the areas surrounding the Millbury Intermodal Station. Some of the images that were found in the document show buildings and show buildings that don't really reflect the image or the vision of Millbury's future developments. Also, with that said, we are recommending 16 replacement images that are more in line with Millbury's vision. To give a little bit of background on the timeline of past meetings that we've had regarding the amendments, we did hold a study session back in August 17th of 2020. The Planning Commission, we presented the existing images along with compilation of different kind of options for replacement and received feedback. We then held a study session with the City Council in September 8th, 2020, and City Council directed staff to search for more images. The city then selected Placeworks to aid in the Document Images Amendment in July of this year. The consultant team at Placeworks worked with staff to compile a series of images that could replace the existing MSASP images. Staff met with the consultant team to narrow down to one preferred option per image. And the city attorney and staff are recommending two additional amendments. Revising the MSASP, one, to facilitate the ability of the city to obtain community benefits from developers. And two, to allow for contributions to the city's Affordable Housing Fund to be accepted as a community benefit. And with that, I'll hand it over to our consultants at Placeworks to go through the image amendments section.
Thank you, Nestor. My name is Bruce Brubaker. I am a principal at Placeworks. And we worked on the original Station Area Specific Plan. We're happy, I'm happy to be back in Millbury and kind of bringing the, the specific plan up to date in terms of its imagery and text amendments. A little bit more background on our working with staff. We did work closely with staff to identify images that were brought to their attention as not really meeting the city's vision, the community's vision for the area. Some of the imagery was very contemporary, cutting edge and technological. And so, we, we looked at different ways to find images that would be perhaps more suitable for what the community thought in Millbury. We did an image search. We brought back alternatives to replace those images and worked with staff again. And therefore, ended up with the, the package that we are presenting tonight. This, these images that we'll show you tonight are actually in your planning commissioner package as well. And it is my pleasure to introduce Pranjali Deokol, who is my associate at Placeworks to discuss and show you the images that were replaced. Pranjali?
Thank you, Bruce. Good evening, everyone. I am an associate at Placeworks, and I will be presenting measurement amendments that we did for the Millbury Station area specific plan. Next slide, please. So, the next few slides would go where all the image amendments. Each slide would show, will show an existing image on the left side and the proposed image amendment on the right side, which is also shown with a red revision bubble, as you can see here. So, the very first amendment was to the cover page image. This rightmost image was replaced with an image showing ground floor active frontages, which we thought better aligns with the vision of the plan. Next slide. Second image replacement was on page 3.4 of the document. Replace an existing image of the linear park, which did not quite relate to the existing text in the document. We replaced it with a, with an image of an outdoor open space, which can be used as a gathering space by residents. Next slide, please. On page 3.5, we replaced the existing image showing the building step backs, which is this leftmost image on the existing page. And the proposed image is what we think show, gives better lines with the text in the document and also shows a variety of transition elements applied to buildings, including projections, variation in height, and upper floor step backs. Next slide. As you can see, there's another image on the same page that was replaced. The rightmost image on the page that has been replaced, showing the landscape. Low impact development measure. It's showing an example of low impact development measure to address on what we run off. Next slide. Page 4.16 of the document, replace the existing surface parking picture, showing the country and parking with a photo showing development that better aligns with the station area plan, future development, which is expected to have parking provided either at the podium level or as a parking garage screen from view. Next image, next slide, please. On page 5.11 of the document, we replaced an existing image with, with an image that better represents a street wall. The ground floor and first two floors built to the setback, setback line, and the upper floors having an upper floor step back. We recommend, recommended replacing the image on page 5.16. The proposed image shows a variety of playground activities for kids and better lines again with the vision of the plan. Next slide, please. The cover page for chapter six. We recommend the proposed image to show private development that conforms better with the station area vision, ensuring future development style. Next image. On page 6.3, we replaced the existing image that showed the corner treatment with a more recent development style, showing a corner tower that looks great, a gateway feature. Next slide. On page 6.7, we replace the image on the bottom left corner of the existing document. The new image, image that's seen on the right side shows, shows articulation of the facade in terms of projections and recessed, recessed windows that we think aligns better with the text that describes the articulation and massing intended for the station area plan. Next slide, please. On page 6.8, we replace two images which are located on, on the bottom right corner of the page. The first one on the left shows windows arranged in, in a, in a pattern to create a rhythm across the facade. And the image on the right represents a building that has a clear distinction between the base, middle, and top portion of a building. The, the ground floor has, has been, has been designed as an active ground floor frontage, which aligns better with the text in the existing document. Next slide, please. The proposed image for the sustainable building design represents typical development showing solar panels on the roof deck, which is an example that promotes use of sustainable design practices. Next slide, please. On page 6.9, there is another image that we replaced on the, on the bottom right corner for the vehicle driveway design. We thought the previous image was a little hard to spot the driveway location. So, we replaced it with an image that clearly shows a driveway access, access from a side street with a well-marked entry. Next. The onsite landscaping example that is shown on the existing document was replaced with a, with an image that shows how landscaping can allow us to create a more interesting and aesthetically pleasing entries to residential developments. Next slide, please. The existing image on page 7.7 seems, seemed a little bit old and not reflecting the future development that has been planned for the specific plan. So, we replaced it with an image that shows the architectural style that is intended for the specific plan, showing a street that, that, that allows for a bus trail. Next slide, please. And the last image replacement here in the book is on page 7.13. We replace the existing surface parking image with an image showing transportation demand management measure in the form of a bike station where you can store your bikes. And there is also bike repair shop at the ground level, just as a representation of transportation demand management measure that will encourage walking and bicycling. With that, I hand it over back to Nestor, who will be going over the text amendments.
Thank you, Pranjali. So, as we mentioned earlier, we do have image amendments, of course, but those are coupled with some text amendments that we're recommending as well. Our policy P-I-M-P-12 of the MSASP currently requires a development agreement for all new development projects that seek increased densities through a community benefits program. A development, a development agreement is, are other contracts that are negotiated between property owners or developers and public agencies that govern the specific terms of a development project. Any developer taking part in the Community Benefits Program is currently required to enter into a binding development agreement with the city to specify the public benefits. It will be, will be provided in exchange for the higher development intensity that is being requested. The city attorney and staff recommends that policy P-I-M-P-12 be modified to allow the collection of community benefits without requiring the parties to enter into a development agreement. A community benefits program, it's a much simpler agreement than the development agreement and focuses on the payment of the benefits. This slide here just shows the page, it's just a screenshot of the page with the, with the edits there that are being, or with the amendment that is being requested or recommended, I should say, and I'll just zoom into that real quick. So, if, if approved, the, the text would read, "For a new development project in which the developer elects and the city agrees to utilize the Community Benefits Program, the party shall enter into a Community Benefits Agreement that specifies the types of community benefits." Along with the Community Benefits Modification, we're also recommending a public benefits type modification. So, the MSASP currently does not allow affordable housing funds as part of the benefits. The city just recently in July established an affordable housing fund. So, with that said, staff is then recommending amending the MSASP to allow for contributions for affordable housing to be accepted as one of the community benefits. Again, here's a screenshot of the, of the page that we are, we are recommending to be amended. And I'll zoom into the text specifically of the public benefits list. So, we would eliminate the text there that reads in parenthesis, with the exception of affordable housing benefits. So, we would then allow affordable housing benefits to, to be a part of the public benefits list. In terms of next steps, approved, the amendment would be presented at a future city council meeting for a final adoption of the amendment. The consultant team at Placeworks would then work to finalize the amendments and republish the document. So, with that said, staffers recommending that the Planning Commission consider the approval of a resolution recommending that the Millbury City Council approve an amendment and the accompanying text and images to the Millbury Station area specific plan. The amendment consists of one, replacement of 16 images with new updated images. Two, an amendment to modify the policy P-I-M-P-12 of the specific plan to allow a Community Benefits Program as an option for the developer and the city under the Community Benefits Program. And three, an amendment to page 182 in chapter 10 to allow the acceptance of affordable housing funds as a community benefit. So, that concludes our, my present, or our presentation. And staff, both staff and the consultant team at Placeworks are available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Do any commissioners have any questions?
Where am I?
Kathy?
I don't know if you can see me. I really didn't have a question, but I, I thought it was a really good comment in here, being that I've been in Millbury for a long. A nice little two paragraphs here on the prevailing winds. And I don't think we put enough emphasis on this sometimes when people are developing projects. And I, I think we should pay a little bit more attention to it because it sounds like related pedestrian comfort. And I had really never thought of that, but they're talking about buildings that are over 100 feet, which often funnel winds and affect the wind patterns at the pedestrian level. So, as we're looking at some of these much higher type buildings, we need to be cognizant of that prevailing wind in Millbury, which every year seems to be getting more prevailing, if that's what is happening. So, that was a really good comment in there. Other than that, I didn't think the other examples were that bad, except now that I'm looking at the new ones, I'm thinking, I think they were bad. So, I'm glad that we spent that time working on it that night, as tough as it was at the end of the evening, looking at these buildings, that it, it came out ever so much nicer. So, I want to thank Placeworks for helping out.
Any questions? Chris?
You know, I really actually liked a lot of the new images. Obviously, they are changing and upscaling the quality of the buildings and looking a little bit more like what we were intending, for sure. The one I didn't really like was, was at page 6.9, or page 20 on page 6.9, 20 of the slide deck. You could jump to that for a second. I'm a little concerned about the look of the solar panel shading on top of the building. It's the one image I thought was a little bit kind of sketchy.
What image was it again, sorry?
Page 20 of this, of your show, of your slide deck.
So, this, this one?
Right there, yep, the one in the upper of the two that are changed. Those strange looking panels, the way they're designed. That's one thing I thought was a little off putting in all of the images that you've shared. As I said, I've liked everything except for that one.
And I think from what we discussed when we, when we looked at the images with, with the consultants at Placeworks, they kind of, if I'm not mistaken, they might be able to provide a little bit more detail on this. But I thought they kind of served as, as kind of shading structures as well, not just.
Yeah, I just wish you, maybe there's a better looking shading structure. It's just like sails on top of a building here. It's more like the, the, the top of a building's mechanical, instead of an actual shade or a nice feature associated with the building.
This is Bruce Brubaker, if I may. Nestor's correct, we, we did identify this photo. It is shading some rooftop seating areas, so it has that benefit along with the solar panels. But we're happy to find a different image that shows. We were attempting to show sustainable building design. So, something that, you know, often sustainable design is rather invisible. You know, triple pane windows or better mechanical systems. So, solar panels is one thing that, that can be identified as sustainable. But we, we're happy to look for a different image if, if the commission is, is requesting that.
I appreciate the balance that you're mentioning there, Bruce, that, you know, obviously you want to make the image show that everybody knows it's a solar panel. So, they have to be, you know, identifiable enough. But aesthetically pleasing enough would be nicer than these squares.
Mr. Conneran, would you like to speak?
I would, thank you, Madam Chair. I provided some edits on Friday to the staff report that didn't get reflected in the exhibit. On, this is for the provision P-I-M-P-12. It's in the specific plan, it's page 4.26. The intent was to allow either a development agreement or a Community Benefits Agreement, depending on what's appropriate. And that, that language is contained in your staff report, but it, it didn't get captured into the exhibit here. So, I would ask you, when you vote, hopefully, to approve this, that you would leave that option. I can give you a real quick, I mean, development agreement is pretty complicated. It, it often deals with a lot of different subjects. And I, I think staff looking at this realized that, you know, there may be situations where we really don't need a full blown development agreement that has to be adopted by an ordinance of the city council. It's kind of a big deal. This is an easier way to accomplish that. And then, at the same time, we noticed that, I think, really, based on the predilections of prior staff who, before the city had an affordable housing fund, we had taken out our, the ability to provide cash instead of units for affordable housing. And since with the idea that the city really wasn't in the business of managing an affordable housing fund, well, we certainly are in that business now. And I think it's something the city feels very enthusiastic about. And so, it's important to make that second change. But that was already captured, but on this one, P-I-M-P-12, I'd appreciate it if we would say development agreement or community benefits agreement.
Can you go to the statement?
We'll prepare, Darcy Smith, Community Development Director, we're going to prepare a slide that brings that up right now, just so.
Okay.
And then, if there is a motion contemplated later, if you can make that as part of a motion and we'll pull back up the slides, you can read into the record. We apologize for the confusion.
I'd like to make a suggestion, Maureen. Maybe if we can just comment on the pictures first and knock that off and then talk about the, the language after that.
Yep.
I mean, either way, we're just in questions mode right now. So, any questions? No? Yes?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
This is Bruce again. I located a folder that had different images for sustainable buildings. And if I could share my screen, I could show you, we had
And if I could share my screen, I could show you, we had three, we picked one. And perhaps the commission could just arrive, arrive at one that's preferred right now. And we could substitute that. Does that make?
Yeah.
I will share, uh, yes, I will share my screen then. And I will bring, so can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, so here's one that shows, uh, you know, a top view of solar panels. Shoot. Yes, here's the one that we did put in the book. And here's another one that shows a roof garden, which is also a sustainable measure. So these are the three that, uh, that we did suggest with staff and, and staff concluded and with us that, that this one. Does a good job of, but this is one that, that does have a different view of solar panels. So we're happy to do what the commission would like.
Kathy?
I kind of like the one you chose. Um, right now it would looks great, you know, maybe ten years from now. So great because the styles change, but it did not bother me. But if I had to make a second choice. Um, I would certainly not choose this one. I think I would, uh, choose the next one.
Okay, before we go any further, we're still in questions mode. We're going to get to discussion in a little while after public comment.
Okay.
So we'll bring these back up, but is there a question?
One, it is a question.
Okay.
And I hear you saying that there is seating up there?
Yeah, there's some rooftop seating up there, which is not uncommon for mixed use buildings. There's a roof deck.
So is there um plants or anything, or is it just seating?
Yeah, I'm not sure. We don't have a picture from above of this unit, but we were told that, that it does have roof decks. And it's, this, this building is actually in Redding and it's very hot there. So the shading is quite welcome in that case.
Thank you.
Chris?
Alright, so is the effort, the, the desire here is to capture both a sustainable from a vegetation as well as sustainable from a solar? That'd be the ideal or?
Oh, um, it, it could be. We, we just wanted an example of sustainable and we can't capture the whole gamut. You know, every aspect of sustainable design, but two aspects that. Can be seen in photographs are green roof decks.
And is that?
And solar panels, so.
And was that first picture that you showed showing both plant life and solar panels on it?
It does.
Alan, yeah, okay. So kind of as the blend of both elements.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, um, question?
Alan?
Um, I'm more concerned about the, uh, the modification of the policy P I M P twelve. It's kind of unclear to me about what the, is it, is being exchanged here? And who's giving the approval for these community benefits? So if the developer applies for this exchange for community benefits and adds to the community benefits fund, what are, what are they getting in the return? And then also who is the city? Who's approving of that? Uh, is there a specific rate or fees or is that spelled out that it's not kind of open ended? Exchange of donations or, or is there a clear cut? Um, fee schedule for that and a clear cut path about what they're getting in return? Or does that bypass like the variance process or review from the city council or the city planning commission?
Darcy, did you want to try that one or?
I'll take the stab and then hand it off to Mr. Conneran, Darcy Smith, Community Development Director. So to fully understand the community benefits. Um, I suggest you maybe flip to the two pages in chapter ten, which are pretty simple for. The overview of what community benefits are and how they were. Um, you know, envisioned in the original Melbury Stationery specific plan. And this policy change and the language change for affordable housing makes no significant change to that. So all we are doing is two things. One, we're allowing it a different mechanism, a community benefit agreement in lieu of a development agreement. And we've outlined in the staff report, the reason for that, it's another avenue that the developer in the city. Could enter into an agreement and the community development agreement is a little bit simpler than development agreement. The city has approved two large development agreements for. What, what I think in our lifetime will be the biggest transit oriented development projects, transfer development one and two. Um, and those development agreements, you know, took a lot of time to negotiate between the city and the applicant. Um, their long term contracts for ten, fifteen year projects. They are illogical and not well suited for smaller projects, which is what we're processing now, such as the life science projects that are smaller. And, and typically only reviewed by the planning commission. So to answer first your question, how does the community benefits process, you know, work and who approves it? It's typically approved by the approval body, which would be either just the planning commission or the planning commission and the city council. For larger projects. Um, but they would be coming to you and the community benefits agreements. Um, the terms would typically be negotiated by staff, working with the city attorney team and the developer's attorney. Um, and then the terms would be presented to you in terms of what the benefits are. And so this change to P I M P twelve is, is something the city and our attorneys highly recommend to give the city. Um, a better option um for the smaller projects. Um, and they're not new. They've been used for many, many years. And essentially P I M P does not, is not consistent with chapter ten as written. So if you, if you read chapter ten, it does allow this already. Just, I think there was a, a lack of truing up and um back in the policy, sometimes that happens when you're drafting the plan is. As Bruce and Pranchely know, you know, you're, you're changing the words here and there. Um, but it, I, as I read chapter ten, it was certainly of intent to allow for community benefit agreement. And I, Placeworks can, can weigh in on that. So it's common in other plans that they work on throughout California. The other change, as Mr. Conneran said, is changing the type of benefits that the city could receive. And I think when we, when this plan was approved back in twenty sixteen, again, the city didn't have this affordable housing fund. Had a, an old redevelopment affordable housing fund. Um, but we have a brand new state of the art affordable housing fund that the city council um approved in July that's now in effect. And the balance of that is zero. So the city has a strong interest to build up our affordable housing fund. Because all affordable housing projects require some sort of subsidy. And they, 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 the city, um, you know, will be looked upon to. Um, provide some funding. And if we're at zero, you can just imagine how hard it's going to be to get those projects off the ground. So um for some of these projects, in exchange for. Um, what the plan lays out is the triggers for community benefits, which to answer your question, it's not something you can get through variance. It's increased floor area. Um, and that's again, is not changing through this policy that went through, I think, a very robust community commission and council process back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. And the city selected um the items which would then trigger community benefits. And the main one that we will be presented with shortly is an increase in employer ratio. So there's a direct exchange between a slightly bigger building and a payment um or provision of community benefits. And the only change we're making here is just to allow the city to receive affordable housing funds. So that would be a cash payment to again, build up our, our fund. Um, and right now that, that isn't allowed for, and it was, wasn't envisioned. We've certainly obtained onsite affordable housing, such as the Gateway Project, which. Um, the city as part of that development agreement negotiate community benefits in the form of twenty percent affordable housing onsite. That was the community benefit along with some other provisions. Um, but without this option, we would not be able to, to accept cash payments to our affordable housing fund. So I was just saying closing, it's really, really critical. Most cities allow it. Um, and it gives the city an option and that would come, that ultimate decision on whether you want to accept that, that benefit in exchange for what I just described. Increased floor ratio, that will come to you again. Um, and be before you as the policymaker. So I don't know if Bruce or Mike Conneran have anything to add on that?
I can provide just a little more history. Um, so I've in addition to this, at the time that the revised specific plan was adopted. I mean, obviously the, the main policy change was that the densities were, the permitted densities were allowed to increase substantially. Um, I think we believe that's good planning decisions in the area of the, uh, of the Millbury Station. Um, that in exchange of forgetting that density, the, the city felt it would be entitled to some benefits. Um, at the time this was instituted, um, it was not legal for the city to require that rental housing be. Uh, provided at an affordable rate. There was a case called the Palmer Decision. Uh, has since been overturned by red, by legislation. So one way in which the city felt it could get that uh would be through this development agreement procedure. Um, again, as, as Darcy said, it's pretty, pretty complicated, you know, thirty pages, single spaced. I don't even like to read them and I get paid by, um, they're, you know, so these are much simpler. And it's basically the city is permitting increased density in exchange for additional benefits to come back to the city. Uh, there's options on how that's done, but the city wants to have the option to have that as affordable housing because of the housing crisis in the state. And as, as Darcy said, the, the difficulty, particularly with lower uh levels of affordability. Uh, the difficulty in financing those. We're very lucky to get the Republic project. Put together a whole smorgasbord of funding in order to get the better housing uh project built, but that's not always going to be available. Uh, there was money from the county and other sources. That's not always going to be there. So this will give the city some flexibility, can pick projects that it's like, that it likes and, and have those, have those developed. So um, this is just really giving us flexibility at this point.
Chris?
So um, I just kind of want to confirm I understand this correctly. You want to provide a in lieu fee. Um, you basically can come through this agreement instead of a development agreement. Um, and it would come to the planning commission for review and approval. It would require our approval. Is that correct?
With the exception that it's not an in lieu fee, the in lieu, and the sorry, I should clarify, this would not be used for any residential project.
Okay.
Residential projects are now subject to our inclusion requirement of fifteen percent and. Or are in lieu fees which are for fractional units or small projects. This would, this would not be an in lieu fee or an impact fee. This is called community benefit. And so it'd be a voluntary payment of which the city has discretion to use.
Alright, so.
Residential project, before commercial project. Most commercial projects will pay those commercial impact fees that were also, you reviewed and were also passed by the council. But in some cases, they may want to pay more or they may be exempt from this, this typical commercial for the housing impact fee.
Okay, and so if we do not change this, it has to go into a, a development agreement and that has to go through both us and through city council. Correct? Alright.
Yeah, and we wouldn't be able to collect these sort of funds.
So in many ways, I'm a little worried because we are taking the power of decision making out of the hands of elected officials and putting it into the hands of the appointees.
Nothing's changing there.
Alright.
Changing there per se because um city council still has the ability to review your actions. Um, and larger projects typically go to them. They're also going to be reviewing this package um after you.
That was my next question, which was if a city council member wants to review it, they can ask to review it and have it brought to council. Okay, good. So it's still an oversight mechanism. Right, and if a developer decides to build affordable housing instead of providing a, a fee. Um, does that still come through the typical development agreement or does that come through the?
Affordable housing. No, the recently adopted affordable housing ordinance has no true options for. Uh, well, there's, there's some alternatives to building onsite construction, but there's strict criteria that's in place. But that, that isn't relevant here because these are voluntary kind of benefits provided above and beyond the normal. Threshold requirements for affordable housing.
Can, can I, 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 I feel like we're confusing two things. There's two totally separate paragraphs, two perceptions. One is to allow cash payments for affordable housing which weren't available before in the earlier version of the MSASP. The other is a paragraph that talks about we can not just have development agreements, but we can add community bound, but development, community benefits. Agreement rather than a development agreement. They're, they're not connected necessarily to each other. They're two simple edits to this document.
Correct.
Right? So it's not, not changing the processes, it's giving us two new options. But not changing any of our processes.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Alan?
So just to clarify, it's only for increase in density. It's not for like. Get obtaining a conditional use permit or some other variance. And then the second thing is, is that I'm more concerned if we do increase density and send to these residential developments that there's, you know, ongoing. Needs for services and increased services year after year after year. So that um this conditional uh use uh, the community benefits is only a one time. Is that correct? It's only one time, but there will be. Uh, can you clarify that say there is increase in density? That would there be ongoing annual increase in fees, maybe because of building may have higher square footage? So maybe they'll pay more taxes or would there be an increase in annual rates or fees or taxes? That will support those services needed for the increase in density by that development?
I'll take that. Um, Darcy Smith, so first of all, the plan and the related SEQA document, the program E I R. Did analyze a certain level of development and this or even this, this sort of additional. Increase in floor area or density was analyzed, you know, falls under that analysis for the environmental impact reports. And when you talk about analysis of impacts on community facilities and, you know, utilities, wastewater, water, sewer. Parks and Recreation facilities, those were all analyzed at a build out number and we're under that analysis number. Well, well, that will be presented to you as part of the project approval. So you'll see that analysis. All the projects here pay impact fees, the Millbury Stationery specific land impact fees, those are assessed on a per square foot or per unit basis. So they pay their fair share and that's intended to cover the cost of additional demand for capital infrastructure and facilities. The annual. Of costs that folks pay, users pay for water, you know, sewer rates, et cetera. Those are annual fees and they certainly pay their fair share of what they're using. But the actual investment in the conveyance items, such as the, you know, the sewer lines under the street and the water lines. Those are done through impact fees and the city has robust impact fees in place here. Um, and they cover all of those, the items, um, utilities, water, wastewater, stormwater. Transportation, parks, et cetera, library, public safety. So we have all those impact fees in place and they will pay the fair share of those. This in no way eliminates that requirement to pay those fees. And then taxes, yes, certainly. So taxes are paid, property taxes are paid based on assessed value. So yeah, if you build a bigger building, uh, your assessed value is higher than a smaller building. And so yes, they pay property taxes, which portions of them come to the city. But again, those property taxes don't really fund, you know, capital, infrastructure and facilities. They don't fund, you know, the cost of providing water and utilities to the project, et cetera. They started giving the city, you know, basic operating revenue for us to do. Provide basics, but a large part of it funds the schools and other um things that are important to the community. So is that, did I answer all your questions?
Oh, yes, very good. Thank you.
And I want to emphasize, when the projects come to you, you'll get a bit, a lot more information. Here, we're just making a policy change um to allow an option that you can consider at a future date.
Okay, any more questions? No? You know, any members of the public that would like to speak up there during this public communication? We have one attendee. That I can see on the list. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Nathan? Is, can, can somebody make him?
Yes, Nathan, I'll give you um a chance to talk. You'll unmute yourself, please.
Alright, thanks. I'll be brief. Um, I liked some of the changes uh related to the removal of the surface parking lots. In favor of, you know, uh, less car forward designs. Um, that looked really nice. I'm surprised those surface parking lots made into the original version of the station area specific plan images. And yeah, I just, I would just want to uh say that I think what staff is proposing uh for the community benefits agreement. And specifically the um allowance of the, of the affordable housing and adoption is very good. and specifically the allowance of the, of the affordable housing adoption is very good. This is definitely something we sorely need in Millbrae. I'm very happy with the progress the city has made towards better support for affordable housing through the earlier introduced inclusionary requirements, but this helps finish that up, finish that up. And yeah, I'm excited to see this adopted hopefully tonight, thank you, bye.
Thank you. All right, back to that list, anybody else? No? We'll close the public comment, all right, discussion, motions?
We'd volunteer just to on the sustain or the sustainable, I do like the one that has the both the plant life and has the solar panels on top, it's a lot more clear what we're looking at, that it's actually solar. Whereas the awnings, you're not quite sure they're solar, but we assume they're solar, you have to read the text. I prefer it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have not shown up here, comment?
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Just a comment that it would be good to make sure to clarify the captions on some of the pictures. For example, on the parking structure, there's a picture there, I think it looks like it's the Whole Foods on Ocean Avenue in San Francisco. And there's a car parked in the driveway and it says mixed use building with parking, but actually there's no parking there, the parking is actually underground, so the caption on that picture would be good to put mixed use building with underground parking. The same way on figure to this. On my version of six point seven, there's a building facade articulate, no, not that one. Do, here it is, six point seven, but seven point seven, there's a picture of a bus transit. And it looks like the caption on the bottom, it's wrong, it has some code with some website. And so it'd be better to have a description on the bottom to say exactly and call out exactly what's good about that, that picture. So just, I like the pictures, I think they're fine, maybe just get to have a little bit more description, make sure that the caption clearly states what's good about that picture. So, I mean, you see a picture, everyone looks at a picture differently, so it's good to call out what exactly is good about that picture.
Can I, can I ask a question related to that then? The captions are already part of the MSASP and we're not changing the captions. The pictures are meant to illustrate whatever we're trying to illustrate on that page. I mean, should we, should we be making text edits at this point? I don't, not feeling that's in the plan for tonight.
Well, I mean, like for seven point seven, there's an obvious typo error on the version I have, so we get to fix that.
That's, that's a copyright.
That's, yes, that's a, I just want to clarify that that's the source information for the image.
Yeah.
That is the link for it on page, on page seven point seven.
Right, it's, we don't have those for every picture, that's not the only picture that has that, so.
That is the only picture we had. We had to source, that was not freely available. And so we have to, we had to provide the source information along with the image. All the other ones were either taken by staff or from an in-house effort.
Other comments?
I guess to back up a little Alan's point, you know, some of the captions have statements, you know, some are capitalized, some aren't to start them. Maybe just take a look at the punctuation.
On, on figure five or page five point one one, there's talked about setbacks and setbacks and seventy-five percent of building footage built to setback line. There's, it's kind of unclear, maybe it's more clear for practicing architects, but there's two figures there, one that shows recessed frontage near the street and then another picture that shows recessed from the upper floor. So it'd be good to clarify the requirement for the seventy-five percent building frontage, whether that's from the street or from the entire elevation of the building too. And then there's also no caption on that picture also, so it doesn't really clarify, you know, what's good about that, that picture, what, calling out what we're looking at. There's like two different discussions about setbacks and frontage buildings. Can we pull that up, five point one one?
Sure, just give me one second.
And through the chair, if you would like us to make some minor modifications to these captions, we, we can do that before we take this to city council. It's not too much work to change some of them. Since we'll be making potentially the other change to the policy to get that in there.
Right, so here in the middle column, there's like two figures. One has a building with a recess on the fifth floor and then one has a recess on the corner of the building. And so get to clarify, it says at least seventy-five percent of building frontage should be built to the setback line. And so I'm not sure what that figure on the right is representing the middle top picture or the middle bottom picture. Or, so it's good to have a caption to clarify what that is and then clarifying that seventy-five percent, I would assume that the seventy-five percent, at least seventy-five percent of building frontage. The way I read that, it means that it's only twenty-five percent of that frontage facing the street would have to be recessed.
So the, the picture was meant to show a step back of the upper floor, so it wasn't meant to show the bottom graphic, the build to line, that's a little bit hard to show in a picture. It was meant to show a graphic representation of the top, yeah, the step back. And so if you look at the left picture, you can see it's not a very good representation of a step back. And we thought the picture on the right was better, we can certainly add a caption that says something like, you know, this shows an example of a step back of the area over the third story. That was what it was meant to show and you remembered our study session last week on the downtown El Camino Real specific plan. We also saw some massing examples showing these step backs and we thought this was a really good picture to show that.
Actually liked it if it has a little outdoor dining area, I thought that that might have been the depiction of what we wanted for the building frontage setback. But maybe not the case here.
Um, I'm gonna chime in here again. We're not here to edit the MSASP. We're seeing the images that got replaced. It went through an entire planning commission meeting and then the council has already done this and weighed in on their choices on the new images. We're only seeing the images, the pages with images that were replaced. We're not going to go back and start altering captions on the rest of the document. So I don't know how much sense it makes to alter random captions now, I'm not even sure if we're supposed to be in a lot of ways because the few line edits we're making in the document are going to have to go through planning and council. So if we keep making more text changes, what does that mean for the process? These are illustrations. They're not always clear cut examples, they're illustrations that the replacement images are far superior to the ones we had before. In the ones we had back then, all of them were horrible, but they're illustrations, they're not necessarily diagrams. And the people that use this book are the developers, they're professionals. So we're giving them direction, but not specific examples, please do this, please don't do that. So we've got to remember the context in which we're working tonight.
Let me show you another example, four point one six, page four point one six, pull that up. So this one talks of on the bottom right, it talks about parking. And I know that this is a facility over in San Francisco near Ocean Avenue. And there's a car that's driving into the parking lot, but it almost appears that like it's parking right in the middle of the two buildings, but that's not the intent of that, that there's, there's actually underground parking, it's heading into an underground parking garage here. So, you know, we definitely don't want to give the impression to the developers that we want cars parking, you know, like this right in the middle of two buildings. So, so that case is good to clarify. I mean, we're, yes, we're exchanging the pictures out, but maybe the caption's part of that also picture, to clarify what that picture is. Okay, just, that's just my comments.
There's no further questions, at some point, can you cue staff to walk through the policy changes on the slide so we can show you exactly what Mr. Condon was referring to? Nestor, can you cue that up for when we're ready? Yes, so here's the policy as written in the staff report and as recommended by staff and the city attorney. And the change is that we would keep the language of the, that exists now related to the development agreement and just insert the second option, community benefits agreement. And then can you bring up the motion slide? If the commission so decides, we recommend that as part of the motion that you include that specific text edited as follows here to retain the development agreement language here. So that, this shows it the best of what we're keeping in the development agreement language to give the city flexibility in that option.
Okay. Questions or comments on that now that we're seeing it on the screen?
Because I would agree to the images, updated images, and then also I'd agree that the language, now that it's been explained and what it actually entails, I think that's fine. Make a make a motion to modify the Millbrae Station area specific plan amendments to have a replacement of sixteen images and an amendment of modify a policy PIMP twelve of the specific plan.
In, in page one eighty-two of chapter ten.
Of page one eighty-two, chapter ten, yes.
Can we consensus on which picture for the sustainable?
Yeah.
By all five, oh, four of us?
Yeah, one sec, I also Kathy raised her hand a moment ago, Kathy, did you have something to say? Unmute yourself.
Thank you. I, I was wondering if that decision had been made on that one image that we had questions on. Other than that, I was ready to second that motion.
Okay, then let's just do a quick check on the solar panel image.
I, I prefer one or three.
I'm okay with either one.
Chris, you're fond of the
Both the vegetation and the solar.
Yeah, but my own, well, anyway.
Remember guys, it's an illustration, we're just trying to show sustainable design, so so I can go with the, with the rooftop garden with the solar panels, I'm happy with that one. So we have
Want to bring it back up one more time?
Yeah.
Well, all three.
Sure, coming up. I don't know what order, I guess that's one, two, and three. Do it more slowly.
I, I like one, I love this one.
Two. Three.
Kathy, do you have a preference?
Yeah.
Which is, which one?
One or two.
One or two, okay. Alan, do you have a preference?
I would suggest not doing this third one because it's kind of misleading, it talks about having another feature besides a solar panel, so.
But the it's meant to just be an illustration of something that is sustainable, it doesn't have to be solar or only solar. So if, if we, if we know that we're just trying to show as many options as we can in one picture. Does it matter? Because otherwise we're going to be in a tie.
The chair.
Okay, I'll suggest two.
So I, the way I looked at it was one shows obviously vegetation, two shows solar and three shows solar and vegetation. That's the way I would frame the question here. You know, me personally, I just like the fact that we're actually doing both sustainable elements. But, you know, everybody has their own preference.
If this one gets the most, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm with this.
The panels and it just, to me, it's not a really good illustration, but I'm only one person, so. Either one, I think we should just move forward on either.
All right, so this one wins. Okay, with that said, I believe we have a motion on the table.
Yeah, we have a second.
And a second too? Okay, then votes.
Commissioner Delagro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Excellent, thank you everybody, that was a lot of work. And now the MSASP is much better.
Oh, it's much better, like I said, I didn't realize how bad it was until I saw this, so.
So on to the city council with that, beautiful.
Thank you all for the discussion.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alrighty. No new business, staff updates.
Thank you, commissioners, just one update for you this evening, just wanted to bring your attention. E County is hosting a webinar and discussion series this month and, well, two this month and then it's a four part series. Two this month, one in November and one in December and it's called Creating a More Affordable Future. It's a webinar discussion series on Wednesdays at six PM. It's part of the, Let's Talk Housing event, it's part of our general and updating our housing element. The first module is why affordability matters, that's on October thirteen. And the second one is on October twenty-seventh, that's on housing and racial equity. The third module is November ten, housing in a climate of change. And the fourth module is on December first, putting it all together for a better future. To register for this and to learn more about events such like this, you or any member of the public are welcome to register at letstalkhousing.org/events. So that's that, that'll be taking place over the next few months, so please let anybody that you will think would be interested to attend. The next planning commission meeting scheduled for October eighteenth will be canceled as we don't have any items for that meeting. We will resume planning commission meeting on November first. And that is all the updates staff as this evening.
Thank you. Announcements? Kathy, is that your pen?
I was just going to remind everybody about the man, woman and student of the year, it's October the fifteenth. If you haven't gotten a personal invitation, please give me a call. We were not sending out personal invitations except for committee chairs. except for committee chairs. Or if you've attended before, some of those got personal invitations, but generally speaking, it's a volunteer award and the awardees this year are the Honorable Robert Gotcha, who has been mayor and served several years on the council. And Marion Kong, who has been very active in our community for quite a few years. And the student is Sophia Baltasar. So if you're not we should have given the staff, have you sent out the invitation to all the commission members?
I have received an invitation.
I'm sorry?
I have received an invitation.
Right, but has staff sent that invitation out to all the commissioners?
The invitations were delivered here, so I, I did give it to Chair Joe.
Okay, so you sent it out to everybody?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Just a reminder, we've got until the end of the week. Love to see all of you.
Any other announcements?
My goodness, it's quiet.
We have Beats and Brews, October 21st, Oktoberfest. So Thursday night, 5 to 7. German music, the premier Bay Area German music band. There you can come in costume if you like. There is some sort of contest involving Steinholding. So there could be lots of fun. So that's another thing to do. Anything else?
Catherine, is there an RSP required for that banquet?
I'm sorry?
Is there a RSP required for the banquet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just note I attended the Japanese cultural fair on last Sunday. The turnout, really great event, community event and it's nice to see more of our community members out there at the Millbury Library.
It was a little warm.
Nice day.
All right. If that's it, we'll see everybody in November.
Whoa, we're getting close to Christmas. Well, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.